All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for attending this morning's meeting. Again, today's format will allow public access and I will ask for public comments after we finish up with the committee meeting notes. We do have a very short agenda and with that, Ron and I thought it would be great to provide an opportunity to devote more time to discuss the draft guiding principles on equity, diversity, and inclusion and talk about some short to midterm ideas and items you'd like to see this board take up in the new year. Ron would like to put out a couple of things for your consideration and discussion, ideas regarding their engagement, our engagement on particular matters. So with that, I will ask that we have any comments on the December 10th board meeting minutes? Which are now on page three of your documents. Any comments, considerations? I'll entertain a motion to approve then. So move a second. Our second is? Ms. Corns?
Mr. Albert?
Ms. Corns?
Mr. Gresham?
Uh?
Mr. Benassi?
Uh?
Mr. Dillard? Mr. Masachi?
Hi, thank you very much. All right, we'll now move on to the executive director's comments. Ron?
Good morning, commissioners. There's a couple of things I wanted to talk about today, but well, the first item being the, we had circulated a letter to you all that's going to be coming from the chief of police, Chief Boone, and from the housing authority. I hope you've had the opportunity to take a look at that. Commissioners that are attending virtually, Phyllis put that letter on the S drive and also emailed it to you. So you could take a look at it. And this letter came out of our, sort of our ongoing dialogue and strategizing with the NPD in terms of trying to address some of the public safety criminal related matters in our community. We've talked about a number of things. One thing we thought of doing was actually sending out a joint letter. And the couple of things that the latter, that we were hoping that the latter would be able to do is that the NPD had noticed that there were criminals that eluded them and that they were taking up, they were finding sort of a place within the community where residents were allowing them to sort of take refuge, to be able to loot police. So we wanted to notify residents of penalties for doing that, which is outlined in the first paragraph of the letter. In terms of possible eviction and losing assistance, but we also, with the approval of NPD, we put in there some of the criminal violations that they could be exposed to if it was discovered that they were harboring criminals. So we wanted to put residents, the residents that are cooperating, that are allowing evading criminals to take residence, we just wanted to put them on notice that they face, not only, like I said, eviction, loss of assistance, but also criminal violations. The second thing we wanted to do is to let them know that we needed their cooperation if we were to be successful in deterring crime in our community. That we just couldn't do it alone, that NRHA and NPD, we couldn't, we can't do it ourselves. Because the resident, cooperative residents actually provide a sort of another set of eyes out on the community where we know we can't possibly be out there 24/7. But cooperative residents as part of our team would really help us to deter criminal activity within our community. So we just wanted to let them know that, hey, we welcome any assistance that you can provide for us in terms of alerting us to anything, any suspicious activity, that that would really help us to be able to deter criminal activity within the community. And then we also talked about, even under the pandemic, looking for opportunities to do community outreach and community engagement. It was a lot easier to be able to accomplish that before the pandemic, but the fact that we still have the pandemic, that we had the pandemic, we've seen an increase in crime. And I think there was an article in the newspaper a couple of days ago that addressed that within Norfolk. And it's also nationwide where there's a gun violence especially, we've seen an increase in that. So, but we just wanted to make sure that we, despite the pandemic, that we do whatever we can to still try to engage the community. So we just wanted to alert them to that, to that fact as well. And then the last thing, just to give them sort of directions in terms of numbers and contact information that, you know, if they did witness suspicious activity, that they'd have a way to be able to contact us or they'd be able to contact the Norfolk Police Department. So this letter would be going out under, really, Chief Boone, his, the Norfolk Police badge and also the seal of NRHA. And I think we, I think we probably would still have the chair sign the letter. But it has, the letter, the essence of the letter has been endorsed by the NPD. They had the opportunity to review it and they're okay with the language that's in the letter.
Is it possible to get both of us to sign it? I mean, I feel we got, Chief Boone or?
Well, he, he didn't really, he was okay with the symbol and the, we had that, yeah, we had that comment. But he was okay with the symbol. But we felt like the letter needed to go out, at least they do get the, you know, they do understand that, you know, with the seal, with the Norfolk Police seal and everything on there.
Like you said, we'd like to make sure that the people will understand what their liabilities are.
Exactly.
And the way that they can help, I think that's the real important one, that part.
Yeah, and this is just, this is just part of a sort of an ongoing strategy that, and conversations that we had. We're also looking at some other measures that we were planning on having a meeting with the, with the NPD, possibly with, also with the city attorney, in terms of trying to possibly convey some public property that goes in between our properties where, say, people who are eluding trespassing, they sort of, they can actually go on public property within, within the confines of our property and they can't be apprehended once they're on, you know, any kind of public property. But one of the things that, for example, with Portsmouth Housing Authority, working with their city, the city was able to convey those public right of ways to the housing authority. So that way, when you have someone who's on a no trespass list on housing authority property, there's really nowhere else for them to go. So they can't go on the public street or they can't go on the sidewalks to elude apprehension. So that's where we're working on with NPD and the city, to be able to hopefully do some kind of conveyance that would grant us ownership, ownership of the land, all of the land, and to prevent, you know, people to try to find refuge on public property. And that's, you know, amongst some other things, but that's really the big, one of the big things that, you know, we're working with. And it's an ongoing thing. I mean, we've talked about some things internally that we could possibly do. And so really, there's nothing, everything is on the table in terms of what we need to do to address criminal activity within our community. So we just continue to look to see what, you know, what other things could possibly work. Okay, any other, any comments?
Should we pause for a second to let them?
Yes, yes.
We'll go ahead and just take a pause for just a few seconds.
Good morning. Hello, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
All right, so far we've only done the minutes and then the discussion of this quick letter. I'll give you a second or two to take a look at that.
I have to pause.
Yeah, we had just finished going over the reason for the letter. And this was part of our ongoing strategy to try to address some of the public safety issues in our community.
So although the letter is coming over Don's name, I mean, the letterhead is interesting.
And that's, that was the result of conversations we had because the goal was to try to possibly have signatures of both. But there was, so there was some, maybe some hesitancy on some things, that maybe how it was to be portrayed. But the chief was okay with his, you know, his type of name and the use of.
I think it shows it's a partnership, you know, not necessarily co-operative partnership.
And they were okay with the wording and everything, yeah. So that wasn't changed, that they were okay with that, what was said in the letter.
Okay, all right, Ron, anything else?
No, any other comments? Okay, all right, the next, oh, oh, someone had.
For the commissioners participating virtually, did you have any comments?
Nope.
No, I do not.
I think I'll say that this is the letter, typically when they're not good, Ron and Delphine, I'll let you guys know. I think, I read through it, I think it's not incriminating, but more educating, so I do like the letter. Thank you guys for that.
Okay.
From what I've read, I agree with this letter and it should be.
Okay.
Good.
All right, okay, we'll just, we'll move on to the next, next item that I wanted to bring your attention. And that's the guiding principles that from, I think in December, we had talked about we were going to circulate some draft principles and the first set of principles that we actually, let me pull it up. That we sent out, or the draft principles that we sent out to you all to take a look at, to possibly provide your input for any revisions. Those were basically literally taken out some of the conversations and things that we had during the two sessions of retreat. The second part, the edited or revised of the draft is, I would say it's more of an active, the wording is a lot more active, proactive. I know Suzanne provided a lot of comments, as well as some of the other commissioners, and sort of taking some of the, some of the things of the draft and it's sort of reworded them to make them, like I said, a little bit more active guiding principles. And the goal is to have you all take a good, take another good look at them, see if you're comfortable with the way that it is. And that February, what I would, if you all are comfortable, that we actually adopt them through a resolution in February. That would be the goal. And by doing that, that gives us, you know, us administrators, the parameters when we start talking about policies and things like that. That gives us the, you know, that gives us our orders through the guiding principles to develop policy that'll help with training, creating the expectations of what, hey, this, these are what the policy, this is what the guiding principle is saying. These are the policies that relate. And hopefully, these will help in terms of, hey, if you want to change behavior, these are the things that need to really happen. And, you know, sort of guide people's conduct in the workplace, amongst ourselves and also amongst our residents and the general public. So that's why I would think it would be important that in February, that they be adopted as NRHA guiding principles for equity, diversity, and inclusion.
Thoughts on that? Everybody okay with February?
What happens between now and February?
Oh, that, well, today was just to get any last input, any last thoughts on that, on the draft, the edit of the draft proposed, the guiding principles. And that if there are no comments, then February, there would be through a resolution, that opportunity to adopt the guiding principles.
Is there a discussion about these today or will that be in February?
No, the discussion is today, yeah. So if there's, yeah, with the.
I have a question.
Okay.
Which is if we look at the, I guess, the second draft, the four points.
Yes.
I'm wondering if the idea of ensuring accountability ought to be a fifth bullet point. So that's the stand on it.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know.
I think that's part of the whole reason to have them, is to have accountability.
Yes. As we have, we do have like the heading, or the subheading, we do have, you have recognize, learn, challenge, submit. Which, you know, which correlates to the four, the four points. And there is something in there that talks about accountability, ensure accountability.
It's kind of buried in that fourth thing. I think it's important enough, in my opinion, it's important enough to have a separate number.
Okay.
And ensure accountability, just pull that out, say number five, ensure accountability.
I think that makes sense, sure.
Did Suzanne say make, ensure accountability number five and not under number four?
That's going to make it a separate bullet.
Yeah, I agree. I was just trying to make sure I had that right.
Okay. Dick Ken, any comments?
No.
And Mr. Gresham gave a thumbs up.
Okay, all right, is that okay? So we'll, all right, so we'll have that as a fifth. And so what I'll do is we reword that and then send it out under the, with the fifth. We'll take that accountable, accountability part out of four and then make it its own separate.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And then, and then what we said is that there's one, two, three, four, and then there'll be five.
And then there'll be five, yes.
That will, that will be our draft.
Yes.
And that we'll adopt.
And you'll adopt that in February, yes, if that's okay. Yes, that would be a yes. Okay, okay, all right. Well, thank you all. Okay, thank you. And then the last thing that I wanted to talk about was, like Donna mentioned, to just sort of get your, some of your ideas on the next, I would say the next three to six months in terms of some of the things that you'd like to see the board take up. For example, where we have the organizational assessment that's going on, that hopes to be completed within the next 60 days. Once it's complete, there'll be a presentation to the board in terms of their review, what they see, and then some of their recommendations going forward for the organization. And my thought is that would be a really good opportunity, once that's complete, to start talking about strategic retreat for the organization, that the board would take up sometime after, after that review is done and it's reported out to the board. Because I think with that document, there's going to be some, there may be some difficult decisions going forward for the organization. And I think that the board really needs to have that time to sort of take a look at that, that assessment, and then decide on a strategy going forward for the organization. So that's, you know, in terms of, like I said, short to midterm, those are some of the things I think that are really important. You know, I know we had talked about, especially with me having just started, that it would have been a good time to do, have that strategic retreat before then, but I think there were some things that sort of dictated that we addressed that, what now that we're a result of the guiding principles because of the social, we got the pandemic and the social unrest that was going on. And, you know, we did have some organizational issues as well. We weren't really equipped to handle some of the things that came up through our, you know, through our policies. But we've been able to address that, but I think now that we need to start looking at the organization as a whole going forward. So like I said, that, that, a report out of that assessment, looking at the recommendations, not that everything has to be adopted, but you should have the chance to deliberate on some of the findings and then start talking about a strategic plan going forward. As I think, in my estimation, I think it's really needed because there's a lot of opportunities out there, but we can't do everything. And we got to figure out the three to five really most important things that we need to do in terms of an organization. So we make sure that we have the resources to address those things, that you all see that are most important for the organization.
Okay. Comments, Joe? Anything you'd like to see?
Right now, none on my end, Donna. I think, I think we're full, full up with everything going on with COVID. And, you know, I'm a communication guy and I see what Jennifer's producing as far as monthly outreach. So in the next three to six months, I just hope, you know, we continue to push the things that Susan had pushed out through the diversity and inclusion. I think I would like to see how that just, the foundation is set for that, rather than come up more steps and goals. That's just my perspective.
No, I don't have anything.
Ken?
Well, I'm going to echo something I've said last week. I think we should be contemplating an action plan of being maybe a little more inclusive or proactive, I should say, in trying to develop some entrepreneurs that can do work for our organization and utilize, this is springboard for companies to start, something in the architectural world, in the engineering world, in the construction world, that type of thing. So I brought this up before, I would be pleased to be part of the strike force that started calling on people at Hampton and Norfolk State, et cetera, to see if we couldn't catalyze some supplier base.
Okay, good, thank you. Ms. Rose?
I don't have anything.
Okay, and this isn't the end, I mean, if you think of something, you know, later, you know, please bring it forward because, again, one of the things we want to do is make sure that we're hitting all of the right things at the right time. Suzanne?
I think that the organizational assessment will definitely provide a foundation.
I think, yeah.
A good, you know, a way to think about how we don't spare ourselves too thin, and how we prioritize the work.
Yeah.
I think there are some broad strategic issues that we need to continue to focus upon regardless of what the organizational assessment says.
Exactly, yeah.
This idea about, you know, really putting me to inclusion and diversity and equity through, as a board, a seriously growing, you know, an entrepreneurial effort is one. And second, I think it's an ongoing issue about safety and, you know, security in all of our communities. So those two things, I think, we need to be on the forefront, you know, kind of underhurted with the other stuff that comes out of organizations. That probably will be things, and sustainability, budgeting, funding.
Yes, all that kind of, yes.
Okay, Alvanda?
Well, I just wanted to, first of all, commend our executive director for a deep dive into the whole issue of diversity and how this is becoming a guiding principle for our organization, for the board. I agree with Dick, I mean, not, sorry, not Dick, I agree with Ken in that I think the suggestion Ken made gives us a working strategy around the bullets that we have embraced here or reviewed. And one of the things I would say about them is, initially, I was going to comment that one, two, three, four, five of them really was a little too fuzzy and, you know, not specific enough. And when you start dealing with things like diversity, you really have to be specific. Because you got to qualify when a person is noncompliant or compliant. And so I'm glad to then add accountability as one of those. And I think we should embrace Ken's perspective and get us a plan that codifies these goals into an actual plan. The other thing I would say is, just kind of going off the reservation for a minute, I say this all the time, and you all know this, because I'm in the community. And so, as I said, I hear a lot from people in the community, and diversity is one of the challenges that I feel we have. Diversity in procurement, diversity in leadership, all of those kind of things are challenges that we have that I think will be addressed in this approach. And so the one area I can avoid commenting on is the guilders' guild. And I had a brief conversation with our chair this morning. And so what I'm going to say is that the guild, to me, does not serve my expectation of something that has at its foundation. something that has at its foundation and intent to be inclusionary. I know that our team, our staff, your staff, Ron, your development staff, and they have done an excellent job by having, now this is just my perspective, they implemented and executed a bad policy, but they've done it very well so that the problems with it were nominal. And so their work in trying to make it work right, I think, has been stellar. They've done an outstanding job with it, but I just think it's kind of, I don't say out of this is usefulness. I I think it's time to give it another look because I understand that we we need contracted builders with that come into us that ensure that they have a level of certification qualification and all of those kind of things. In my mind, and I know I'm a simple minded guy, in my mind, the same condition we put in the guild, we could just put in an R T or request for bid that they have that. Right now, I think the belief is, now I know differently, and I want to say that on the record. I know that the development team is not subjective. They are very objective in the way they approach this, but the belief by some of our community members, I'll say that, talk about the difficulty in getting into guilds, therefore I think that really reduces our options for diversity in 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 that level of security. So I would just implore our chair that I think sometime very, 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 very soon, we need to have a serious conversation about it.
Yeah, I think one of the things, this is not brand new, we've talked about the difficulty, well, both ends of the scale, as you pointed out. The guild is great because we've got people that have proven track record. And then you've got the other end of the scale, which is you can never get into guild because you're not given the opportunity to have a proven track record. So it's like when I was in high school, you needed a hall pass, but you couldn't get a, I was no, couldn't get to the office to get a hall pass. You know, it's one of those.
Yeah.
So I think we should definitely put that is one of the things that we take a look at is to A, is the guild still beneficial to us? Are there other ways to accomplish the same thing is what I'm hearing Alfonso say, and so let's take a look at that and see. And then Rose?
I'm thinking, and I think that, I'm thinking, who makes the founding decision when a problem come up like this? I think there should be a board, a small board, to make of at least three people that find that when your problem falls like this, then those three could talk about it because just bringing it up and nothing done about it, still is no, there is no answer. I think there should be a board, a board of at least three, at least two say, then that one, you know, it should be something.
The development committee.
Yeah, we have the development, we have the development committee, yeah, development committee we have.
Dick, Wes, and Ken Benassi on the development team, maybe if we added one person.
More.
Yeah, to really look at.
To really look at.
And better recognition.
Well, one of the.
No, again, I think it's important that we, A, have some deep, you know, I use these cliches, some deep dive into the board, you know, the guild itself, and then bring it back to the full board and we we'll decide whether we need it, you know, as a board, a guild, do we need, what are the ways to do it? So I think you're absolutely right. There ought to be some oversight from at the very top as to what is this process? What is this idea gonna look like in in the future?
I could tell you this.
You're coming so spot on because I think prepare to try to get some out this morning. And but I thought better of it after talking to the chair about it. I didn't want to blindside my colleagues and so and put them in a position that they had to react to something that they hadn't thought thoroughly about. And so at the, after discussing it with our chair, I just felt it better to put it on the table and let's have a serious discussion and then the action.
Okay, that's about the contracted and everything. What about when N R J have an employee that is causing some distress? And why why do we always have to let Ron have to be responsible for making that decision? Why not have, okay, we're gonna bring it to the committee and we're gonna, we have a little small committee for that? So it won't be on that one person.
Well, what, and this goes even a couple of things that I heard. The first being with the with the with the guild, some of the things that came out of our, like our roundtable with contractors was the whole thing with the guild. And we had some really good comments on that and the whole idea with the whole idea with the roundtable with the contractors, minority and female businesses was to find out what are some of their obstacles? And so we got some really good comments that we wanted to incorporate into our our economic inclusion program. For example, we're meeting internally, we're meeting on Friday to talk about these demolition contracts. Because the first one we let out, we didn't get a minority. But we need to be able to address, like with the St. Paul's, with the number of demolition contracts that are coming out. We need to discuss internally how, what do we need to do so that we could we could make it easier for minority contractors to have a part in it? And, you know, one of the things on the table is like, can we decouple the contract instead of having these huge contracts? Can we decouple, make them smaller? And that was one of the reasons even with the building sixty-one that we did, maybe there was an opportunity, but we just didn't get the opportunity. But I think we need to do a better job addressing that and same way with the builders.
Hey, Ron, hey, Ron.
Yes.
Hey, Ron, can I can I make a comment on that? I think that you're on to something there and you and and this is one of the hurdles that you have with minority developing a base like this. The demolition world is, that's very capital intensive.
Yes.
So, I mean, you gotta have, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of equipment. So that that's that's a, to decouple that might be a pretty good path if you could figure out a way to, you know, unbundle those services so you have kind of a labor component and then you have a equipment as an example.
Right.
Yeah, there also, there also are, most of these demolition folks specialize in certain types of demolition. As Ken's saying, the the capital outlay, for example, there are only two or three that do the really big demolition jobs. So I I don't know how you decouple, but that is something we ought to look at.
Okay, but yeah, we're, that's one of the things we're taking a look at. And also the builders' guild came up. That was another thing we're looking at that, you know, was some things, you know, you do for convenience and, you know, that and you could sort of ensure that the work's done, but it it may have an opposite effect, it may be barring people who have the same level of expertise, but they just don't have the experience or the capital. So we're taking a look at changing this whole builders' guild because, like I said, we do I could say just throughout our procurement process that and then listening to some of the contractors, we do, we have historically done things for our own convenience and not necessarily to help contractors. And I think we just need to change the mindset. I mean, it could be something simple as turning around a payment for a contractor. You know, we don't want to say, well, we have thirty days to do it, but if you know you're working with a minority, why can't you turn it around a lot quick? Well, it's gotta go through this process. We gotta find a way to streamline those processes. So like I said, we built in a lot of our own conveniences that have, that are now obstacles to being able to recruit minority contractors. So we we, there are things that we can do internally, even with the, even with the paperwork itself. When when they're filling out the paperwork for to respond to a contract, you got sixty, seventy pages and only five of them are really important. So those are the kind of things that we can do internally to maybe make it less onerous for contract, minority contractors, female businesses to be able to participate in our procurement process. So we're, you know, we're, we are, we're trying to address it. In the economic inclusion policy, we also talked about mentorship programs. I know Ken had talked about that. And even with some of our residents, I know that Linda Davenport, who oversees the section three, she's, that's really big on her radar in terms of mentorship and trying entrepreneurship. So we're trying to include all of that as a part of our economic inclusion program, which, you know, like I said, we're doing internally. I know the city has theirs, but we we're going a different way of 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 doing ours that we're trying to get feedback, but also try to, you know, build it up, get rid of some of the internal barriers that we have so we'd have a better, we think we'd have a better policy once it's, once it's all said and done, yes.
Well, I'm wondering, and I'm asking this question more of Ken Benassi and Dick Gretschl. The S B A has the eight day program that you all are familiar with, I'm sure. And I know that we can't duplicate it per se, but are there any components? We talk about mentoring businesses. Are there any components you think that we can adapt? Dick and Ken, I don't know how familiar you are with this. I know Dick is. Are there any components from the S B A eight day program that will help us develop a mentor mentorship or mentoring strategy?
My my gut reaction is absolutely. It it, you know, mentoring, I I I couldn't agree stronger that mentoring is the element that we need to start. That's the foundation of of what we need to be doing. And the eight day program has a lot, a lot of structure to it that would be beneficial to looking at.
Okay, so and even going back to what Rose was saying about maybe having a a board, we do have the committee. So, for example, like with this economic inclusion plan, the first thing we'll do, we'll take it to our, we we have a committee. I think it's got, it's an economic inclusion committee. I think Alfonso's on there and Dick's on there. And, you know, maybe we could bring Ken on it, bring on that. And so that would be the sort of the board to take a look at these policies, to make sure they're doing what they should be doing. So we, it's sort of the same thing like you were talking about before, to make sure that these policies that the staff has has put together, that it it works or that from what they see, it it's what the what they feel that the board would really support. So we do, we do have that. So you all don't have to be involved in every instance, but once the policy's set, then the expectation is that we administrators put it in place. And so we have, we have the policies to sort of, sort of follow what the board wants us to follow.
And so I think it's helpful if the board is clear
Yes.
about what what we'd like for you to do.
Yes, yeah.
In this example, you know, to have the board say, Ron, we'd really like to see some recommendations from staff
Yes.
about how to make the builders' guild
Right.
more inclusive, more equitable, you know, that that's within our, so we'd like for staff
Okay.
to, you know, to analyze that, develop a recommendation, a set of recommendations, bring it back then to the committee.
Yeah.
So then the committee can review it, assess it, send it back for more work or or develop a set of actions out of that that then come to the board that we approve. So then there's, this is what we'd like to see.
Okay.
Staff does its work.
Yes.
Then we refine that work and the full board does the action planning so that you know that it gets done. You know, I think a lot of times things kind of get stuck in the pipeline.
Yeah.
It's just because there's so much going on.
Right.
And, you know, and so if if we adopt that process.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, for everything, you know, we'd like to see, you know, I mean, if we, when we adopt the set of guiding principles, you know, then our decision would be, you know, Ron, we want to see these principles embedded in the operations.
Policies and things like that, yeah, and that's we'll bring it back and that was the plan.
And then we have actions. So the builders' guild is an excellent place to start with concrete and a lot of it is under our control.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a great start.
Okay.
Look, let me just jump in because I wanna kind of take a little bit of, well, not exception, but certainly gear away a little bit from where the direction that Suzanne is giving because my thought, my intention, my preference would be not to go in to try to make it better, but to look at it and make a determination if it's even necessary. And so that that's kind of where I, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
But I think that's what Ron is saying about.
No, 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 I'm responding to that.
Yeah, I understand, but I think that the idea is at some point we get to work and we look at it and we say, this isn't worth it.
Yeah, no, I I mean, no, I I know.
Or we can do the same thing without having this, what seems to be barriers in the way. Can we accomplish the same thing without the word guild?
Yes, I agree.
Or or, you know, their parents are putting lipstick on their head.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? We dress it up with a lot of good time and stuff and it's still gonna be that.
Yeah, no, that's, you're right. I think the point we we're trying to make is the outcome has to change.
Yeah, and I, we need to be able to describe the outcome.
Yeah, okay.
You know, it's fun, so it's not, less about the guild and more about we want people to have opportunities and how do we do that? And that gets to the.
This is Ken Benassi. Can I make a comment? Rather than trying to look at this globally, I I kind of like the idea that Ron brought up earlier about take one craft, if you will, one, and 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 try to dissect that one and look at what can we do, not universally, but to to open up the opportunities for that one area and then see what kind of lessons we can learn, like for instance, demolition. I mean, maybe rental equipment is the way, you know, maybe it's it's separating the contract. I don't know, but just dissecting just one contract or one craft and and come up with some, and then and then try some of these things. And see, and then and then do some mentoring and use it as a trial balloon to see what the hell works rather than just operate on a policy basis where we're hoping for good outcomes. Yeah, I couldn't agree more with Ken. I I think we're trying to shotgun blast right now. I hear, I hear the sentiment, but I think we need to look and and as Ken's saying, take one, if you will, guinea pig and look at it and see what the repercussions are. We we certainly have us as the owners, end product that we need to be concerned with. We have the end user that we need to be concerned about. We have the contractor we need to be concerned about. We have the public. All those folks are impacted. And so whether we have a guild or whether we have some other way, we need to make this as open as possible while maintaining a quality standard, a a direction, a understanding, a control of the construction management of projects, which is a whole nother issue. But I I think I'm I'm with Ken. Let's let's look at one portion of this and see where it leads us and and maybe learn lessons so that we can then incorporate it to other parts of of the industry. And the idea is let's try to move the needle. This this subject has been beat to death by every city council in Hampton.
This, this subject has been beat to death by every city council in Hampton Roads. It's been going on for decades. But, you know, let's, let's try to, instead of talk about talking about it, let's see if we can't move the needle in a, in a small way, in a craft, and, uh, take some lessons and then incorporate some policy if possible.
We'll definitely, back to my, let's go solve world hunger, let's make a sandwich. You know, let's. But we'll definitely get some, I mean, just with the, like I said, with the whole CNI, the way things are going, we'll definitely get some. We'll be able to see how, you know, the, like, for example, like they're saying with the, the coupling of the contracts and what we could do to try to bring in. I mean, we'll have some real world feedback from that before we even come up with the, before the economic inclusion policy.
Yeah, I, I really didn't want to, uh, engage this deep after you and I talked about it, but we're here. And, uh, going back to what Dick said, I mean, Ken said, or what Dick agreed with, I would just caution us that, uh, you know, we, we, I don't want to see us take the posture of having a minority uh, prove that they can do work first before getting assigned to work. All I'm trying to have a big forehead is equal protection under the law. Everybody's judged by the same standard. Now, sometimes people might need some mentoring who hasn't played in the field long enough, but you can't do a thirty million dollar demolition job if you know your capacity is only five hundred thousand dollars. I mean, you, you got to build to that, but if we have a process that makes it a level playing field, what happens is our subjectivity oftentimes doesn't come into question because it has the appearance of, uh, being objective. But what it really does is advantages one group over another. And so my, my concern is let's have equal access. Let's have extended, everybody has to adhere to it. If I have to, uh, if, if I apply for a contract to outfit this room with, uh, uh, computers, and you want twenty computers and you say in here that I have to have this kind of computers, that kind of hoodsets, this kind of, well, everybody's got to do that. And so that advantages. And, and just one last thing on that. I talked to a lot of F in our H A board about this. One of them told me that he is a private contact right now. He's developed two shopping models, an eighty year apartment building, unknown. That's what some of us come from somewhere. And he said, he has a philosophy to get into the deal. And now, see, to me, that, that, you know, that's where, uh, I think if we had equal, everybody on the same level playing field and not advantaging one over the other by taking, who would qualify to do that?
Yeah, but, but, but Alfonso and, and, and fellow board members, though, do we even have sufficient levels of bidders for a lot of these, um, crafts and, and, and tasks and jobs? I, I thought that was our real challenge is, you know, we can find plenty of, uh, in, of, in certain areas for like white collar things, like engineering and, and, uh, architecture. Aren't we struggling getting, uh, minority, um, qualified bidders even to bid on the projects?
Uh, yeah, we are, but I don't think we're necessarily doing a good job of outreach. Um,
Well, that's, that's, that's my point. It's, it's outreach
Yeah.
plus mentoring. It, 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 one without the other is not going to do it.
Yeah.
But I mean, uh, I, 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 I'm, I'm just saying we got to be proactive. But if we throw a big blanket on this thing, we cast too wide a net, we're going to, we're, we're not going to move the needle.
Because one of the things that, we talked about these goals that the city adopted based upon the Virginia Beach, uh, the, the goals for hiring minority, female headed. Those weren't just numbers that just came out of air. They actually, the group that they had actually did a survey of minority contractors within the area. So these are realistic numbers that can be achieved. They weren't, you know, they weren't aspirational. They were actually numbers that could be achieved, but it had to be the proper approach had to be taken. And so there are out there. They did it, like I said, they went through all the businesses that are within this immediate area, this Hampton Roads area. So there are contractors out there to, to do these jobs. We just have to do a better job of ours.
All right, let's, Ron, you've got some work to do.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
And so I think the work needs to then come back to us.
Yeah.
And let's see where it goes from there.
Okay.
At least step one. I think, uh, again, the ideas from Dick and Ken. Because again, what, what really don't want is another plan that's next to the other four planes
Yeah.
that are on the shelf.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah.
So whatever, move the needle, change the outcome, you know, whatever you want to say.
Okay.
That's, that's the metric you're going to be measuring again.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Other, other comments from commissioners? Okay, uh, I guess, uh, we look at any of the, we look at page twenty and twenty-one or the development activities?
I'm sorry, I have to ask why we have, why do we have, why have we no housing operations report?
Who's that, who's that? Uh, Donna?
I'm sorry, that may sound, it might sound a little more aggressive. I'm just curious that we have no, um,
Do we have any committee, um, Donna's on the.
Is Donna on the line?
Yes, good morning, can you hear me?
Hi, Donna.
Hi, um, so we have our quarterly report coming up, but it's not going to be ready until next month.
Okay.
So I will be happy to answer if there's any housing questions, but we didn't have any specific reports for this month.
I appreciate it. I mean, I just, we, I saw the dashboard report on the, uh, you know, on, on the St. Paul's moving in, in the packet, but it's such a large operation. It was just odd to me that there, uh, was no report. So, and again, not meant to criticize, but I was just curious.
Yeah, I think part of it, you know, with the holiday last month, uh, we did have a lot of staff out for, a, a bit for the holidays, but, uh, you will see a lot of, uh, information in the February meeting.
Hey, Donna, this is Ken Benassi, a cou- couple of questions. How are we doing on, um, just anecdotally, if you don't have the data, uh, 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 available? How are we doing on, uh, eviction, or, or, on receivables? Potential evictions, et cetera? This real worry card we have when we start, uh, executing the, uh, demolition plan and, and people haven't been paying us. I mean, we, we don't want to con, we don't, we don't want to conflate those two issues. Are we still documenting, um, our communications? Are, have, have we deteriorated in receivables at all?
I know, unfortunately, I can't say that it is going the opposite direction. Um, in our last delinquency report, we have five hundred and forty-six residents that have a delinquency. This was as of December thirty-first. Um, we're about at eighty-four percent, um, collection rate for public housing, uh, much higher in, in project-based voucher, uh, PB, um, sorry. Our RAD project-based voucher in PBB communities were at about ninety-nine percent. Um, looking at this time last year, we are about two hundred thousand dollars over our delinquency amount as compared to this month last year, or December of last year. So it is still a, a concern. Uh, staff is continuing to reach out to the residents. Uh, I get reports from Bryant Sanders, the property management director, um, every two weeks on outreach effort. Uh, we have been successful in contacting some residents and getting them set up uh, to pay their balances. Uh, some residents are still not being responsive at all to any of our outreach efforts.
Hmm.
And right now, the eviction moratorium was up, uh, was postponed, uh, through the end of January. So we're still not sure what's going to happen at that point in time. Um, I just feel that it's going to continue to keep getting pushed into the future based on the current COVID status.
That's, that, that does not breed confidence. That's, that's a challenging, um, report.
It is challenging, but we are continuing to stay on top of it and do as much outreach as we can to get in touch with the residents that have these balances.
Yeah, that's, 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 that's your only recourse. I mean, you, you just got, it's just communication.
Yes, and we are definitely documenting all the communication efforts so that we can show for each resident what has been attempted. Um, and in some cases, like I said, we have gotten some contact and we are working with those families.
Very good. That, that, that's very important to, to document. That's great. Well, other comments? Okay, uh, is there any, uh, on the finance, requests or proposals, cash advance? That'd be twenty-two through twenty-five.
How about number four development? This was really all housing?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, development on page twenty and twenty-one? Looks like we have some sales, but no acquisitions? Other comments?
I have a question for, uh,
Go ahead.
both Don and Donna. Uh, Donna, I, I, I heard you, uh, when you were saying we're still doing outreach. Is it possible that we can, and maybe you're doing this already, Ron, I'm not sure, uh, put a team together that I would love to work on to try to ascertain resources, uh, at the end of this pandemic that won't, uh, allow us to have, uh, a massive tsunami-like eviction because people have gotten so far behind by not paying rent and being, uh, exempted from rent payments, or not even exempted, just delaying the rent payments because of the tsunami? I think our accounts receivable to that extent is going to be so high, uh, to, I can't see how we're going to avoid massive eviction. I mean, and so you got a plan?
Well, other than what we, you know, we have been working with families in terms of like
Yeah, no, no, I know that, but I'm saying, to Donna, I'd be more than willing to work and try to put a pool of funding aside, so we could have tried some funding, uh, to have so you can, uh, you know, have a couple hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, and I'll try to help raise the money. I mean, from nonprofits, from churches, from different places like that. And, uh, would that be helpful, Donna?
I, yes, I think so. As, as we've talked about before, I mean, there are funding resources out there. Unfortunately, a lot of them our residents don't qualify for because they're receiving subsidy, uh, rent now.
Yeah.
And rent is based on their income, and that's part of the talent. But I do realize that there would be other resources that may be available. I would propose, Mr. Albert, if we talk, we have our Housing and Safety Committee coming up on the twenty-fifth, maybe we can formalize some type of, um, resource group that can be looking at that, if that's acceptable.
Sounds nice, that sounds good.
Yeah.
You okay with that?
Yes.
Sounds good, Donna. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Donna, my personal, for, for our personal, how much, uh, do you have a balance or estimate of how much we're looking at right now? Of the back, the back rent total?
Yes, sir, um, three hundred and thirty, almost three hundred and thirty-three thousand as of December thirty-first.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, that's, that's a target to achieve. Or at least give us some idea of the
Right.
the magnitude.
Yeah.
Okay. Good, all right, so we'll have that on the agenda for the Housing and Safety Committee. Absolutely. Good. Uh, anything else on the development? All right, now let's move on to the finance on page twenty-two through twenty-five.
Um, hi, this is Virginia. Um, I just want to bring your attention to the, uh, cash advance status report. Um, one notable thing that has occurred on that particular report is on January twelfth, we did get our first locked load for the CNI project. So money is starting to flow for CNI and we're able to pay those, um, those advances off. And, um, we did receive half of the jobs plus, um, money that I mentioned last month, and we're hoping to get the rest of the money, um, uh, this month. They said it was sent for processing. So those are two really good, um, things that have happened in regards to cash advance. Other than that, we don't see any problem and money's flowing as it should.
Okay. Because all things are possible with money and prayer, in that order, unfortunately. Thank you, Virginia.
Thank you.
Uh, one thing I just wanted to comment on, on the, whatever the mattress, the grand furniture thing.
Oh, yeah.
If you read through those posters, we've got some really creative kids.
They are, yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
I like the, the one kid who wants to be God, that's.
No, I like, I like the A-god, right?
That's right.
A-god, that's right.
Not just be God, but A-god. Very, very creative, and it's just amazing. Uh, any committee meeting notes?
I'm sorry, I have, I have new business.
Okay.
I think, I want you all may have.
Well, I was going to skip over that, go to business.
Good try, but, uh, no, but, um, Ron is coming up on his one year anniversary, and I think, and you all may have discussed this and I missed it.
No.
I apologize. But, um, we've usually done a, an annual evaluation of our CEO. Um, and I'm wondering if, uh, we don't want to, uh, give some thought to doing that.
Yeah, no, absolutely, we need to do it. We just need to get with Richard, because we had talked about a couple of the things early on, about changing some of the things based upon the realities of pandemic. So I guess you and I probably need to get with Richard.
I'm happy to, uh, set aside, but someone else has had a point, I think.
Um, So the reward, unfortunately.
Or I'm happy to continue with it, but I mean, it's, it's, um, you know, it's, uh,
The, the rewards are good words this morning. So yes, we, we, we need to do that. And then, uh, we'll get out of the criteria, get it out to everybody, they'll, they'll rate it. And then we'll do, but yes, the process needs to be done.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, would you like to officially form a committee for that performance evaluation?
Well, it has been, there are two.
Will, will the rest of the board please confirm, since it's an annual thing?
Uh, yes, Suzanne and I would be happy to take, take on that role. Uh, Dick seems it's okay, Joe, Ken. I mean, we've done it the last five years. I'm, I'm, you know, I think you guys are okay with it.
Yeah, I have no problem with, Joe, Joe doesn't.
Okay. Carry on.
I agree.
So we don't. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, good. Uh, again, committee notes? Any on that? Again, I, I just hope that there's someday, some way, even with the pandemic, is there a way we can have some sort of connection in the community, even virtually or small? I don't know, just think about, about that, because I think that was one of the real positives of being in the community.
Right. Right.
Was based with the name, they could actually talk to somebody.
Yeah, we did try the one, the sort of meet and greet that, you know, just a combination of things that, you know, we ran into. But we did try that. And I think that in terms of like the public safety, Karen, Karen Rose, if she's on the line, I think that there were some things that she had thought about doing. Or Donna knows of anything, if they want to comment on that. I guess. Was that Karen?
This is Donna. I'm not sure if Karen's on the phone or not.
Oh, okay.
Talking about resident participation in the committee meeting.
Engage, just engagement, just engagement efforts during the pandemic. I know we, especially as it related to the public safety issues, I know that there were some things that were being done before and we were trying to see if we could find a way, even during the pandemic, to still continue on with some types of outreach.
Right, most of it has been virtually and virtual types of communication. And as we all experience, that has been very challenging for us. We've had a series of meetings and Karen has tried to hold her focus group meetings, which are set up in each of the communities, virtually, excuse me. And of course, the attendance is not great. It's not like it was prior to COVID. And that's something that we're continuing to be challenged with, is getting the residents to attend these virtual meetings. As you know, we did Ron meet and greets. We tried to do those last year in 2020 and we had very low participation for those as well. So we're continuing to look at ways that we can get information out to the residents. We have started doing some meetings in person with social distancing and all the protocols, but we're still trying to limit those as much as possible.
All right, thank you.
Maybe you guys send out a postcard with his file on it to the resident. And then maybe have a little suggestion box that they can write a suggestion and put it in the hall.
Right.
Drop it, you don't have to go in the hall, just drop it in the hall. Yeah. We just communicate.
And we are still, sorry, we are still continuing to send out our community newsletters with some of that information in there as well. So we'll look at putting additional information in the upcoming newsletters.
Yeah, just put his file and a picture in the newsletter.
Okay. Like you say, whatever, you know, we need to be very creative now because you're right. Even on other things where in person you would have 40, 50 people, on the virtual you have 10.
Yeah.
You know, that's the, so we're not reaching the group that we wanted to. Alfonso, you had your hand up?
I was just going to say, it seems to me when we have our annual meeting, not annual meeting, but the public hearing, when we have those at the school auditorium, you know, people show up, it's always very sparse. It seems like settings like that would be very, not easy, but not challenging to socially distance the people. Where you have seating, maybe every three seats, depending on the number of people coming in. And we would be sitting on chairs like we normally are, totally distanced like we are here. And I think the committees could take that approach with. And we want to get into the community, it's just a thought. But, you know, I'm doing highly of that.
Again, I think we need to look at, when is it safe to do that? And so, but just keep that on the radar.
Okay.
I mean, some of it were constrained by, you know, executive orders that say you can't have. You know, things like that.
And I doubt the schools would let us do that.
It has been a year.
That's right. And I jokingly say it's supposed to, no right to stand. That you eat black eyed peas and cornbread on January 1st in order to ensure good luck and for the rest of the year? Can you imagine how crappy last year would have been if we didn't eat black eyed peas on January 1st?
I ain't got you one.
Can you imagine? Sorry.
It's all right, Donna.
Anything on the committee notes?
I'm interested in the idea of the formation of a 501(c)(3). So I'll be, I don't need discussion, honestly.
Yeah.
But I'll be interested to see how that conversation progresses.
Yeah, we'll be bringing that February.
Yeah.
A little bit more detailed discussion on that.
And you have the, I forget what page is it going to?
Yeah.
Forty or forty, I think.
Yeah, that's right, we did take it.
Yeah. Anything else, Commissioner, before I ask for public comment? All right. Hearing nothing else? Anyone in the public who would like to be heard can dial star nine to raise your hand and you'll be called on by the last four digits of your phone number. If called upon, please state your name and address before you address us. Just more, do we have anyone?
We do not have any callers, but I will check the lobby.
You'll check the lobby, please.
We have no speakers in the lobby and we have no speakers on the phone.
All right. Having no one wishing to address us, I will call the January meeting of board commissioners. You go. Thank you very much for your attendance.
Thank you, board.
Thanks, guys.
All right.
Thank you, John.